All here about. Heavenly Father, I come at this hour just thanking you for all the blessing you have bestowed upon each and everyone under the sound of my voice. Oh Lord, I come at this hour asking you to bless every elected official, bless the mayor, and all of us that will be conducting business here tonight. Keep your arms around us, Father, because we need you as we go through these troubles in time now, Lord. They're bad in all over the world, but we need you to just zero in on Bastrop, Father. Crown our head with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of the business at hand. Keep us in your keeping, Lord. And Father, when we have finished here, let us be and done everything that we can that may be pleasing unto thee. These are all blessings we thank you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Attention. Salute. Flag.
Flag of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen, and want to welcome all of those who are in our listening audience on TV. Ms. Goldman, roll call to determine a quorum.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
I'll present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. We are entering into the festive time of the year, holiday season. Thanksgiving is upon us. Christmas is just around the corner. And we will be working with the community to do what we've always done in terms of promoting safety through the police and fire departments. I have just a few announcements, and if there are any other announcements, once I finish, please feel free to share. Open House, Sunday, that's December 1, what is that, December 1 through 5? Theresa, what is that?
I think that's the hours, Mayor, from 1:00 to 5:00.
Okay, okay. So 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, open house. Is that our downtown sales for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's the sipping seat for the holidays.
Sipping seat, I think it's just the holiday sale.
Holidays, okay. With downtown Bastrop, I don't want to put any misinformation out there, but please support our downtown area. We have Veterans Celebration, Sunday, 2 o'clock at the visitor center. And here are some of my announcements. Last month, I should have, and I was just winging it when I was going through announcements, but I should have mentioned Bastrop Learning Academy, Mr. Locke's school that he is principal of, they toured the city hall. Wonderful tour. In fact, I believe they had gone over to the sheriff's department, is that correct, Mr. Locke?
We did.
They went to the sheriff's department, then they sat through court, and they went through every department in the city hall, and I welcome students to come and tour because they need to understand what city government is about. They had an opportunity to meet both chiefs and talk about police and fire, and just briefly I talked to them how everything is connected, and then they came back and they did a walk through the mayor's office, and I talked to them about the administrative end of the duty. So thank you, Mr. Locke, for bringing the students, and I think all schools should be encouraged to do so at some point in time, because this is your building, and we are just stewardors here, keeping your building, so feel free to contact us. Of course, we have to schedule the tour. Which Way is Main Street was held one day last week, and I'm, I think I'm still recovering from all the excitement, and I had my Dr. Seuss hat on, that the kids have grown accustomed to seeing me in, but I think I handed out maybe 2,000 pieces of candy. Great way to stay connected with the children and their parents, and I want to commend Main Street for doing a wonderful job of that down through the years, and our police and fire departments, and the security, and all the details that have to be worked out. But it is certainly wonderful to provide a safe haven for our children to enjoy that day that means so much to them. I want to say thank you to all of our sponsors for the mayor's prayer breakfast. It was a wonderful event with over 300 guests in attendance, had a lot of sponsorship. Our core sponsor was Dean Blackett, the council members, all of them had an opportunity to meet him this evening, but because of him, we were able to have the ticket sale at a very optimum price, and having the members of the clergy to come, because they are our spiritual anchor in the community, and we do need to recognize them for what they do for us to keep us grounded in life and in our everyday walk of life with our fellow We have gotten thank you notes out as a follow-up to make sure that the public knows that we really, really appreciate that kind of support. Secretary Morey met with him a couple of weeks ago in West Monroe, and I keep it on his mind about the red light on Marlette and East Madison, as well as the need to straighten out that intersection into the industrial park. And I just sent some communication to him today, and I'm trying to get him to come back for another recovery plan meeting. If you'll recall, he has attended both of our recovery plan meetings right after this council adopted the plan that the community worked on for so long, and he came back as a follow-up meeting. And I have kept up and tracked all of our successes since that date, and I'm looking forward to sharing that, but we also need the police jury to share with us their successes. We need the hospital to share with us their successes so that we can really promote the city of Bastrop, the Moorehouse Parish community. So I expect to hear back from Secretary Morey pretty soon. The industrial park, I talked with Kelsey Short, he has been our go-to person out of the governor's office. We will be on a conference call probably next week to talk about the updates on that. It has been a very, very methodical process. We have our due diligence we had to perform, but we want to be as accurate as possible before we spend the federal government money. But in talking with Secretary Morey, they look for certified sites, and that's what we're working towards in terms of the industrial park. And there's a criteria that has to be met. Kay, you may be familiar with the criteria to talk a little bit. Do we have you on the agenda to talk? Okay. And if you would, I don't mean to just bring something on, you talk about site certification and what makes a site appropriate for that kind of designation. There will be a business workshop November 12, 9:00 AM in the police squad room. This is part of a grant that we are participating in with Louisiana Tech that I submitted a support letter, so we're glad to be able to offer this to the public. The Memory Miracle, we are getting ready to start that. Ms. Adams, if you'll help us with that, to, this is a trusted source that the public, if you want to make a contribution, and know that your money is going to be screened. All the applicants are going, well, let me take that back. The applicants will be screened, we're not going to screen your money. But they will be screened to determine those who are in greatest need. So we will once again promote that drive, which is an endeavor that I started in honor of my mother, who passed away during the holiday seasons, and that's a way of keeping her memory alive, but it's also a means of our giving back to the community. So I ask that anybody who's willing to make a contribution to this endeavor will do so. Sandra, I believe we're going to partner with your church because of Youth Impact, Youthquake, and New Life on Van Avenue. We're going to ask them to partner with us along with the Moorehouse Parish school system. I spoke with one of the representatives from the school system, and they're going to give us some books, so we're going to kind of change our packaging around a little bit this year to stretch it as far as we can. And I believe that's all of the events that I have to announce. Are there any other announcements? Thank you, as I appreciated the MAGA Center, had a real good crowd, and I just want them to stay encouraged that we are doing all we can to get that red light on that end to accommodate all of those trailers that's in and out of there. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Do we have any public comments? Item number five, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes in regular meeting, October 11, 2012.
I make that motion, Mayor?
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
A second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 12-1474, Bills and Claims for the Month of October 2012. Mr. Locke?
May I move for the acceptance of Resolution 12-1474, Bills and Claims for the Month of October?
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
Second.
And second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, appoint a new member to the Historic District Commission. Okay, we got C, I need to...
Mayor, we need to skip the gentleman we were going to appoint had a death and his family, so he wasn't able to attend, so we'll just try to get that scheduled for next maybe.
Okay. We'll bring this to you next month, and our sympathy goes out to that loss of life in that, for that particular family. Item number eight, Avalorum Tax Report. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor and Council, this is the write-off, charge-offs for our Avalor tax, which is our property tax. I've hunted and hunted and hunted. A lot of these went out of business, can't find them. There's no property, a lot of them are personal thing, furniture and fixtures of a business, so we can't even find that. I was just giving y'all updates and a report so we can get this off of our tax roll. I tried to keep them on as long as I could, because you never know when you run across somebody, they may come back and open up, but I think we're at the point now, we've exhausted and spent a lot of time, and we're just not going to be able to collect this fee. It amounted up to $10,000. Some of them filed bankrupts, some just went out of business and cannot be found. So this is just a report. Doug, do we need any action?
Not as appears right now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, thank you for that information. Ms. Goldman, as she indicated, this is information only to just give you an update on that particular subject. Item number nine, Resolution 12-1475, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Washtau Electrical Contractor LLC for the Moorehouse Memorial Airport Taxiway Lightning. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is a 100% funded grant, 95% is from the FAA, the other 5% is from the Louisiana Department of Transportation. We're fully funded, we've, we accepted, they put out for the bids, and we accepted the bids, and we just need y'all to give mayor permission to enter into a contract with them so we can proceed with the project.
At this time, I will entertain a motion on item number nine, Resolution 12-1475.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, Ordinance 12-4216, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $4,600,000 sewer revenue bond series 2012, the bonds of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of said bonds, designating the date, denomination, and place of payment of said bonds, providing for the payment thereof in principle and interest entering into certain other covenants and agreements in connection with the security and payment of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Bowles and Mr. Thompson, welcome to Bastrop. Great seeing both of you.
Thank you.
Good to be back, members of the council, and Madam Clerk, Doug. It's, we like to bring good news. There's a lot of good news in this for the city of Bastrop. First of which, in conjunction with the sale of these bonds, we had to get a rating from Standard and Poor's, and the city got an A rating on its bonds. So that's very good news for the city on these bonds, and so that enabled us to go into the markets using our underwriter group. I'm going to let Mr. Thompson talk about that in a second, but the matter before you tonight is to ultimately pass the ordinance authorizing you to sign the bond purchase agreement with the underwriters. The sale has been priced today, the actual sale will take place, the 20th, which we've arranged with y'all to have all the documents signed, but we'll do that at that point, but this is just, we go back and we inserted the price, the price is in here, and the total price reflects that the market is still at what I, historic all-time low. So we're in here doing this at the right time, and so I'll let Mr. Thompson talk about the other good news here.
Okay, great.
If I were on top of it, I would have passed this out while he was talking. One or two passed it down.
Namby Thompson with Government Consultants. What I passed out to you is just a spreadsheet to show you about the numbers associated with the refinancing of your outstanding bonds, the outstanding sewer bonds. Currently, you have three bond issues outstanding for the sewer. One that was done in 2002, another that was done in 2003, as well as another one that was done with DEQ in 1994, and your rates were in the 4% and 5%. Well, as Mr. Bowles said earlier, rates are at all-time low. We all know this, we, all of us, or a lot of us have gone out and refinanced or remortgaged our house, excuse me, not remortgaged, refinanced our house. And that's basically what we're doing here, we're refinancing your outstanding bonds into one bond issue. So you issued on the first page, just looking at that very last column that says issue summary, you refinanced your debt for 4.47 million. We also used some of the money that you have set aside in a reserve fund of 779,000, plus a little extra of 62,000, and we were able to pay off all your bonds, and you see what the money was used for it again in that last column. But the most important thing is to turn to the second page, if you would. On the second page, you'll see underneath that savings column, that's what everybody wants to know and love, is the fact that for the next four or five years, you're going to be saving over 200,000, actually over 215,000, and then after that, it levels off. We did not extend your debt. This is going to be paid back by sewer revenue, so that is a savings to your sewer system. If I understand, I saw on the agenda, you're going to be talking about the sewer system in another resolution here in just a second, but this is cost savings to your sewer department of over 200,000. If you add up all those savings, if you look at the bottom number, you saved over the life of the deal, almost $800,000. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to go through any part of it, but the highlights are that you save upfront savings right now, and then over the life of it, almost $800,000.
That's great.
And one more thing, caveat, as Mr. Bowles said, your sewer department, your city received an A rating from S&amp;P Rating Agency. If you look at the, it actually doesn't have it on this page, I apologize, but your all-in interest rate is about 2.19%, and that goes out to 2028. So that shows you what a good job that you're doing there with your sewer department. The S&amp;P, which is an independent rating agency, realizes that, and the market realizes that, which is why you're able to lock in these rates for the whole entire time.
That's great news, and I appreciate all the work, and appreciate your helping us to stay on top of everything, because we certainly want to save the taxpayers' money and use it wisely accordingly. At this time, I will entertain a motion on Ordinance 12-4216.
I make that motion, Mayor?
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
A second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity to serve you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking with the city all these years.
Hope to keep doing it.
Item number 11, Resolution 12-1476, authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a contract with Viola Water for the operation of the city of Bastrop Sewer System. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. And by the way, I actually have a completed resolution here on the screen for this, were you concerned, I had a note that you'll be prepared later, but we have it now. I have reviewed a submittal that was submitted on behalf of Viola Water to the city. It is a resubmission of, I'm sorry, it is a resubmission of a new contract that they are presenting to the city of Bastrop to provide ongoing operation and maintenance services for wastewater treatment here in the city. And I was happy to see that the contract document incorporates certain changes that I made a request be contained in the new document. I was concerned about the city's ongoing and long-term ability to be able to pay. I think that anytime you're in a multi-year agreement, you need to have a concern about your ability to be able, over a sustained period, to meet the obligation. This contract has an upfront five-year period, which is subject to a right of review and approval by this council and the mayor every year. So if you get into this in year one, and you find out, looking forward to year two, that you might be in financial distress and you need some relief, you have a mechanism that allows you to review this and to say, wait a minute, I don't know if we can afford this. So that's point number one. If you do not elect to take that option, then it will automatically renew to your second year, and you will enjoy that right of renewal, of review and approval each year that the contract remains in effect, and this particular right will go up to a period of, potentially up to 10 years, if that's what the city desires to do. Think of it as a one-year contract that is renewable up to 10 times. That's the best way to see it. Also, I think material to this agreement is a letter from Viola Water. I have it here on my computer screen, it's dated November the 6th, I don't know if it's in your packet, but it talks about a delay in implementing any certain amounts of the increase, or any increase in the contract amount, at least for the first year. It says that the new operation and maintenance fee, I think that they were saying they were entitled to a 3% increase, but that the new operation and maintenance fee will be, I think at 949,000 plus, and this takes into account, am I saying, is Mr. Fontenot here? Am I saying this right? In other words, that is the discounted amount that's going to be in effect the first year. All right. And then thereafter, in this particular document, it talks about then what the fee will be going forward after that. But important here is what has been identified as a total savings to the city of Bastrop first year of $38,481.96. With that said, it's now before the mayor and the council, as to whether or not you wish to proceed in approving this, and like I said, if you're looking at me, I feel good about it in the sense that you have the mechanisms here that allow you to look at this every year, and if you are in a position where you can't pay for it, then you can make a decision to renegotiate or to do whatever else it is that you need to do. But I'm satisfied from my legal review.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. We have spent quite a bit of time talking through the details with Viola Water, and Mr. Lawrence has done a lot of research, we've looked at the details, and as he so indicated, giving the city the avenues to be able to enter into this agreement with a level of comfort that you have a way out, should things necessitate our having to go in that direction. Mr. Fontenot, is there something you would like to add, or council members would you like to hear from Mr. Fontenot prior to?
I would like to have Mr. Fontenot.
Okay. Mr. Johnson would like to ask you a question, if you would. Come to the mic.
Joe, just give us a brief in on it, so we all have a clear understanding, from your point of view.
Well, we just, we, the main purpose of this new contract was to clear up old language and old, there was an original contract and several amendments, and it was, the document was getting extremely cumbersome and long, so we weeded through it all, took all of the old language out of it, put everything together into a new streamlined contract that covers everything, so that there's no gray areas on anything, and we cleared everything up, and Doug and I have gone through it, we've had other people looking at it, and everybody's satisfied with the contract, it's going to be a good deal for the city, we can continue to move forward, and it also has stuff in there where if new technologies come in and we're able to change things at the plant, the city would enjoy the savings from that. So all that's built into the contract.
I'm glad you brought that point out. Thank you for that question, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments or question? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 12-1476.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Resolution 12-1477, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Louisiana Workforce Commission for on-the-job training program. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, Ms. Monica Austin found this out. This is from the unemployment office, they used to call it, it's called Louisiana Workforce Commission. They have a program that will help the city if the city chooses to take part, where if we have a position and we want to fail it, and maybe we just want to try them out, and they qualify, the unemployment office will allow us to hire them, and we pay them, and then submit time sheets, and they will reimburse us back for a period of time, depending on what kind of training, on-the-job training they need. We've never done this before, I think it would be a savings for the city, and certainly well worth trying it. If it doesn't work, then we can always stop it. Doug read over the contract, it is with the state, he said it, you know, looked good to him, and next time we have an opening, you know, we want to take advantage of it, because if we can save some money on our end, it's worth a try. It's not, we won't be under any obligation to hire X million dollars, or have to pay them X amount for something, you know, we can do it where we want to. They will still follow our rules, they'll go through the process of screening, drug tests, background checks, still everything that we normally would do, it's just we're going to be able to get reimbursed for their salary for a period of time.
Is that for any employee?
Well, it would be in a vacancy that we have.
You want to talk about office personnel?
Right, it could be office personnel, or it could be, you know, maybe, I don't know if, I want to say like a driver, but anybody that's qualified to be a driver probably wouldn't need the training, but we could use other, clerical comes to mind, you know, at first. You know, they may have the, they may have the education, maybe they're just fresh out of O-Tech or something, you know, they just don't have the experience. To me, that would be a perfect example. They've got the training, it's just they just, I mean, they've got the education, but just right out of school and no experience.
Ms. Goldman, how long would the training procedure be?
It probably would depend, too, on what kind of position they'll be applying for, but whatever the state will allow us to use, whether it's three months, six months. Years ago, they used to have a program through them that was 18 months. If we can get reimbursed... If, if we can get reimbursed for 18 months, we, we will, you know. Whatever they allow us to take advantage of, that, that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, at this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 12-1477.
May I move that we, in favor of Resolution 12-1477?
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
I second the motion.
And second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, discussion action bids on surplus guns from Bastrop Police Department. Chief Black.
Mayor, council, a while back, we were able to get some weapons that were, old guns that were awarded to us by the court, and we declared them to be surplus, and therefore we put them up for bid. Most of them were the ones awarded to us by the court, and then we had a couple of dated weapons that belonged to the police department, too, that were put into the batch. And we received three bids. The highest bid was for $3,650 from Barney's Police Supplies in Lafayette, and I recommend that we accept that bid.
Okay. Having heard this presentation by the chief on the surplus guns, Ms. Goldman, is there any other information you think you need to provide to, to give the council all the information they need?
No, ma'am. We looked over the bids and the requirements that Attorney Lawrence gave us. They had documentation that they were a licensed dealer.
Having heard the presentation by Chief Black, supported by Ms. Goldman and information from our city attorney, what is your pleasure?
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson. And second by Mr. Armstrong. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, discussion action bids for painting City Hall building. Mr. McKee.
Madam Mayor, Board of Aldermen, I think in your package you have a bid tabulation that was submitted by our engineers. There were three bidders. The low bidder for painting City Hall and surrounding buildings and planners, including, the low bid was $47,200. Alternate one and alternate two are $4,800 and $5,000 respectively, giving us a total of $57,000. That includes the planners and the car wash building. And the, our engineering corp, company, corporation recommends that we accept a bid made by R.A. Gilmore Enterprises LLC.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. McKee? In reference to the information that he has presented tonight? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
That company, is it local or what?
They're out of, if I'm not mistaken, West Monroe.
Did we have any local?
We didn't, we did not.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Locke. At this time, I will entertain a motion on item number 14, bids for painting the City Hall.
May I make that motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, permission to advertise for bids for Bastrop Gateway Media and Projects. Ms. Goldman, you want to talk about our, that Gateway project?
Yes, ma'am. This is a project that's 100% funded through the Louisiana Department of Transportation. There's Gateway project that will go throughout the city. The state is approved, and they're ready to go out for bid for this project. Their goal is to try to put it out for bid sometime in December. I don't know how quick they'll get on it, but hopefully by the spring, maybe we'll be through with this project. It's been an ongoing project. It's probably been about, probably three or four years in the planning stage. So we ask that y'all give us permission to go out for bids.
At this time, I will entertain a motion on the Gateway Media and Project.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
And second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And while we are on that note, and Chief, I know you're coming, let me go ahead and address a couple of other things. We're going to be renovating the courtroom, so the courtroom will be inoperable for a little while. Ms. Goldman, do we have dates on that?
Dates on which the courtroom will be inoperable?
I, I think it's starting on December the 19th, possibly going into January. It's possible that we may have to move our council meeting, not the date, but the place.
Okay.
And we'll let y'all know, but it, it should keep, it just depends if everything flows the way it should.
Okay. This is a joint effort between the city and the judge to upgrade this courtroom, replacing the carpet, replacing the, the chairs and the seating and painting, and, and I think the public is going to be really proud of, of the outcome of this project. So we will be, if we have to, we'll give plenty of notification of any moves with the court date for the judge, as well as operation for city, for us. And also, with the same grant money, we are fixing the squad room to make it more conducive for classrooms, workshops and sessions, and replacing carpet in offices that is well longer overdue. Also, the ADA renovations have already begun with Mr. Christmas. They were here today working to make those accommodations, so we are a little closer to your police car. With that being said, Chief Black, liquor license.
Ma'am, I recommend the following establishments for the renewal, their liquor license for year 2013. ANC Quick Pack, 9505 Carbon Plant Roads, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Easy Mart, 1231 North Washington Street, Class B Retail Dealer Off Premises. Stop For You Incorporated, 1920 West Madison, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Stop and Save, 439 West Madison, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Veterans Private Club, 2324 East Madison, Class B Private Club. Specialty Dacres and Spirits, 1923 North Washington, Class B Dealer, Retail Dealer On Premises. Pinky's Quick Stop, 1013 Arant Street, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Rite Aid, number 7338, 727 North Washington Street, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Super One Foods, number 603, 2211 East Madison, Class A Off Premises. Walmart Supercenter, number 986091 Marouche Road, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Walgreens, 1930 East Madison, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Handy Stop Number One, 1610 West Madison, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Porter Speedmark, 1301 North Washington Street, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. Discount Tobacco Outlet, 1414 East Madison, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. The Pantry, Kangaroo Station, 1514 East Madison, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. And Hester's Jiffy Pack, 741 Collingston Road, Class A Retail Dealer Off Premises. And these are all renewals.
Having heard that information for requests for liquor license as presented by Chief Black, what is your pleasure?
Make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Kay King, Morehouse Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. It's really been a busy October. It's been just unbelievably busy. And I believe that things seem to kind of slow down a little bit right before the presidential election, but this week, I've been getting a lot of calls. I think I've had a call for just about every building or asset in this community, including, I've had a couple of inquiries for large buildings, even one specifically someone inquired over the Ditto Building. And the nice thing about that is that we have that building ready to sell. And so I was able to give out information to that person. So sometimes when we think that we do something, and maybe something doesn't happen right then, the important thing is that we're ready. And I did submit it to another inquiry for a large building, and then, like I said, I had somebody specifically call and ask about it. I've had some inquiries, nothing real concrete, but some inquiries on the Eastside School, which I think everyone would like to see, and to see something happen with that building. And this week, in our meeting, we have agreed to do something similar to what we did for the Ditto Building, that we're going to go back to the school board. I think they're having their meeting tonight. And if that building is for sale, that we will see what we can do to get the building appraised and, and be able to market that building effectively. I know it's been something that's been on many people, many citizens' minds every time they, they drive by there. We just have to make sure that the school board is willing to sell the building. And other than that, it's, like I said, I, I've had a call in, outside the city buildings, people just looking for things. So this, when everyone else is getting ready for the holidays, sometimes this is my busiest time of year, because people begin to look around and they start to think about spring. So it's not necessarily the slow time of year for me. But I just want to let everybody know that I'm, I'm still very optimistic. Things are happening, and we have prospects, and, and that even though things look a little, the economy looks a little bad, that things are still doing well. I think our sales tax, I'm not, not in that department, but I think our sales taxes are holding up, and things are looking well. But you asked about the site certification program? So I'll touch a little bit on that. On the primary thing, that when the state comes, you can apply for funding to help with this, but it is a substantial amount of money that is involved in getting a site certified. But ownership, having the ownership secured or have an option in place is very important, because you don't want people, sometimes there's not a lot for sale, but sometimes if you wait until you have a prospect, that people kind of tend to want to increase the price of, of it. So you want to be sure you have your price secured, and you're able to go to someone with competence. So they want you to have your ownership or option in place. You have to have your reports done, your environmental assessments, your wetlands delineation. Sometimes you have wetlands in places that you would never expect a wetland, that might have some type of plant there. Some of your cultural surveys go into that environmental assessment. And then, at times, you, you probably need the geotechnical work done on the site, just the whole package of things that companies usually do when they look for a site. On your utilities, you may not have to have everything in place, but you need to have your plan ready, and you need to have a timeframe and some kind of funding source identified that you can tell a prospective business that, you know, we can have that, that improvement, we can have this done, if you make a commitment, by a certain time period. Often, you don't, may not want to make those improvements beforehand, because you might have a general layout of something, but you don't know what kind of business that you're going to have come to that site, so you can make last-minute alterations on maybe a sewer line size or something to accommodate a specific industry. So it's really about being ready, and once you have all of those things assembled, then you get put on the certified site program. And that has been one of our goals in the Economic Development Organization. We've worked at identifying some sites, and I think I've said this, you know, that sometimes some of our large sites are outside the city limits of Bastrop, but that doesn't mean that Bastrop's not going to benefit from that if we bring in a business to that, because you're going to get this retail sales and the continued retail growth, and that's going to be beneficial to the city. So other than that, and I'm just going to keep working, and I think things are going along pretty well. Going to get, get things back in order. Are there any questions about anything that I covered?
Any questions for, for Ms. King? Thank you for that description of what designate site certification, and that's certainly what we've been working towards with the industrial site, and that's why it has taken so long, that we are just doing everything that we think we need to do when we make the rec, excuse me, the final recommendation to this council. Appreciate all the work that you do, Ms. King.
I have one other thing down here.
Go ahead.
I left it off. We do have a sign ready for the industrial park, and we have, we're currently getting the Dottie to mark that, and I've talked with the mayor this week, and we have a sign laid out to, it's not, it wouldn't be like a permanent sign with pretty landscaping, but just to give people general information about the industrial park, that sites are available. We don't necessarily want to say for sale on those, but that sites are available, and that some restrictions would apply, because we certainly don't want to just sell sites in the industrial park. There's restrictions and things. And that we have the spec building there on the corner. I have that incorporated into the sign, but we're not going to put it right there in front of the building. We're going to put this in a little more generic type place. And then I'm optimistic that we will lease that building again, and then we can just put a lease sign across it, and we won't have it right there in front of that building. But we had, we've had somebody interested in the spec building, but it just didn't quite materialize, and that was on my list there. I'm sorry to kind of add that on. But we'll be getting that sign in place next week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. King. The council members had an opportunity to meet with the PAC, Dean Blackett and his organization, and brought everybody up to speed on our concentrated effort for the, the west side of the town revitalization. So I'll share some information with you on that. We've been doing some things to stimulate growth. Also, I'm sure everybody heard about the Bussie Break. Wildlife and, wildlife and fishery will be the recipients of that, and I expect that's going to be good for the city of Bastrop. They're within six-mile driving distance, and I look forward to working with them on whatever we can do to help them bring that, that reservoir up to speed, that it will be an extra amenity that we can offer for the city of Bastrop that's in close proximity to us in terms of driving, even though they're outside of the city limits. That brings us down to need to ask for a motion to expand the agenda, to discuss ratification by phone poll for men for change requests to borrow uniform jerseys, and Mr. McKee will speak to that. I'll entertain a motion. Properly moved by Mr. Johnson. And second by Mr. Nason. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Key, if you would, uh, bring us up to speed on that.
Mayor, Bo Alderman. Um, on advice of City Attorney, last week, uh, a few council members had received calls from Mr. Odom on behalf of Men for Change requesting use of some uniform jerseys that were All-Star jerseys last year. Uh, I polled each council member a, and yourself, Mayor, and no one had any objections. So, what we need to do now is ratify in a, in a council meeting, and Mr. Lawrence can address that a little better probably, the, the unofficial poll.
It's a matter of officially giving authorization to this group to use those uniforms. These uniforms are city property, but they're, they're to be worn for athletic events. And these are citizens of the city of Basterd. The property is being used in a manner that is consistent for what it was intended to be used for. And so, it's a matter of doing this in the right way of getting this group's permission to use city assets for their intended purpose.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McKee, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Um, we...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lawrence, uh, there is a, there's an addition to that request, and, and I think everybody has a copy of it, but, but yourself, Mr. Lawrence. But I'll provide you with a copy.
All right. I need to say more then?
While Mr. Lawrence is, is reviewing that, the request originally was for last Saturday. Uh, but when Mr. Odom brought the written request in, he actually asked for several dates. But because I had only polled the council members on one date, that's all I could authorize. Right now, while we have it, the council can either authorize or not authorize the rest of the dates.
Council members, uh, might want to look over the information Mr. McKee provided to you in the finance meeting, but uh I appreciate your consciousness of city property, and we have to be so cautious uh in terms of what we do and how we do, and we want to follow the guidelines that's dictated to us. And that is why we have to go through these extra measures to make sure we're doing what's proper and fitting. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to officially ratify what was already done by polling on the phone.
May I move that we, um, ratify the uh, the, the use of those uniforms for the remainder of the time that he needs those uniforms?
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
I second that motion.
And second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? Was it anything else that, was that it?
No, I think you're off of it.
I was also mentioning something about the lighting.
Now, that's, that's, is that the last page?
That doesn't have to come before us, does it?
That's not a part of the, I, I don't, Mr. Lawrence can answer that.
But it's all, it's all... Now, this part is truly brand new to me, all the other stuff I, so, so I got to hear what the issue is.
Uh, Mr. McKee, isn't this, wouldn't this be the same as somebody wanting to rent the, the municipal center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do they have to come before us to rent the municipal center?
No, sir.
Does this have to come before us then?
Well, he, he, he isn't asking to rent. Uh, no, it doesn't have to come before you. I guess to show that's that question, Mr. Lawrence probably can answer that better than I can.
Still trying to gather the issue here.
Okay, we give you a few more.
Oh, I, I see, oh, okay.
One of the issues that he wanted to use...
I see now.
The field, I guess he wanted the city to authorize him to cut the lights on in the ballpark.
Okay.
And Mr. McKee told him it's a ten dollar an hour for, for the lights.
The, um... Are we, are we recovering our actual costs? I mean, I, I, I'm trying to look to the end of what this request is. Is it for it to be totally gratuitous?
Yes.
And, and I, you know, I just don't know that we can do that. I understand the request, but the city has to reco, recoup its costs some kind of a way. And I want to remind you, you'll be, you're going to be setting the precedent. If you, if you do it, everybody's going to ask you this. I'm, I, 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 there's not a delicate way for me to say this, you know? So, you, you, you have to charge something, and it has to be sufficient where you can recover and recoup your costs. You know, on the uniforms, you're going to get them back.
Yeah.
And reasonable wear and tear, but the, the lights carry a light bill, so...
Yes, sir.
Uh, if you're asking me, can you just do it for nothing, I say no, somebody has got to pay for it.
I think that answers the question.
Yeah. So, we don't have to make a, a motion on that, I think.
That's right. If, if there's nothing to do, there's no need to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, now, we did the vote on the ratification, didn't we? Okay, so there was nothing else to do in terms of. All right, well, that, that culminates our meeting. We are preparing for ethics training again in January, and the governor's office has already contacted us, and we have already started the process of what we need to do to set up and extend our courtesy to other agencies. Of course, we have limited space, and we will do the three sessions in one day, as Mr. Durham has suggested he's willing to do. So, we will be working towards that, and we'll let you know. Have we decided on a date, Ms. Goldman?
No, ma'am, Ms. Aki, I think was trying to set that up. It'll be in January, I just don't know what day.
Okay.
Can we also just go online and...
You can, you'll just need to wait until twenty thirteen. Mayor, I want to let y'all know the Tax Assessor delivered our tax roll today on CD. Uh, we FedExed this report, so within two weeks, everybody ought to get their Christmas present.
Thank you so much. At this time, if there's no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
Second.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Any question? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.